... ideas on how to utilize same entrances and exits for two or three businesses and even more, so that you cut down the curb cuts and might have to put in more lights to satisfy the union of several businesses using one entrance and exit. But they recognize that right away that would make the street safer.
So I recommend you look at this, that study and the recommendations that were made from that.
The intent is to focus on the access management study, revise that, and then revisit the quarter, business corridor zoning changes.
Mm-hmm.
Because I think that while the access management study focuses on Washington Street and the business corridor recommendations apply to Washington and Charlestown. And so, Charlestown Road, just to be clear. So there's going to be some translation there. There's enough work for Washington Street to focus on that for access management.
Yep.
So?
Gertrude Hall Trust, 289 Stepping Stone Road, Lee, New Hampshire. Site plan application for 4,640 square foot restaurant at 214 Washington Street, tax map 121, lot 46, zone District B2, continued from 52217.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mike.
So, I think we're familiar with this application, but I want to make sure everybody has a copy of the supplemental memo that was dated June 5th.
Okay.
This gives a quick overview of the amended site plan that you received in your packets. And that was received June 2nd. Are we all good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, no grumbles?
Yeah.
So there are a few things. I want to go through this, and then I want to go through some information that we just barely received and processed, but... So the amended site plan came in, and there were certain bullets that were in the minutes, and I had met with Mr. Dombrowski, the applicant's designer, to review those things that needed to be added to the amended site plan. From my perspective, it seems like they hit all the marks in terms of what was asked and what was provided. There is a, there is text on the plan regarding the dumpster location. There, the, the plan does show the freezer in the footprint, so the presumption is it is not going anywhere. In fact, when I compared it to the old plan, the dimensions were different, so it appears that it may be replaced. That could probably be addressed directly by the applicant. The new plan has the new propane tank location. There were these quote-unquote, as, what I identified as problem parking spaces that were removed. There are some new parking spaces, I want to address those, but I'll just move on for a second. The plan includes exterior lighting. If you look closely on the plan, there are these circles on corners of the building with an L in the circle. That's intended to be a building-mounted light fixture. So that, that's an improvement from the old plan, though, where some corners are illuminated or identified as having lighting. Text on the plan does talk about snow management, where it's going to be removed from the site. And that's, if you haven't seen it, it's note number eight on the lower left-hand side of the plan that was submitted. And then reduced seating, the, just below the location map, on the upper-left side of the plan, the parking calculations are based on an 80-seat restaurant. What this does, in effect, is with an 80-seat restaurant, per the zoning ordinance, you're required to have 40 parking spaces, excuse me, 20 parking spaces. Ratio is 1 to 4. That's why I kind of messed up. But this plan shows more than 20 parking spaces. There are a couple that I want to speak to, because you might notice eagle-eyed folks on the plan. The plan circulation has changed. Now I'm going to talk about the existing curb cut closer to Arrowhead Motors as a northerly access, and then the new curb cut as a southerly point of egress. It is going to be a one-way circulation only, so people can only enter onto the property from the northerly access. There is proposed signage. You'll see, there are traffic sign, there's a traffic sign legend up there, and they are identified on the plan to help direct people circulating around the property. There is also, you can see with this overall layout, that the property boundary is going to be identified by a six-inch-wide white stripe. And that the, the parking spaces are generally consistent with the old plan. They've been angled a little bit to be, to work better with the circulation patterns. There are two spaces close to Washington Street. They're both called employee parking spaces. What the principal concern was, and I did review this plan with the Traffic Advisory Committee last Friday, just so you know, they had a meeting scheduled, so I asked to come in, and we talked through this plan. So I've reviewed all this with the Traffic Advisory Committee, and they had no changes, except for making a comment that the southerly egress point needs to be, the angle needs to be a little more dramatic to discourage any folks sneaking to the left, even though they're supposed to only turn right. That's, that's a design question that we pass on to the engineer. But, that was their comment. There are two spaces at the north-westerly side of the building called employee parking only, and then on the easterly side, there's a single employee parking near the propane, new propane tanks. Those are spaces that are not intended for patrons, but for folks who are there parked long-term during the workday. The reason is, in a, let's say, a regular turnover of a restaurant, it wouldn't be good to have the employees, have non-employees parking at those spaces at the north-westerly side. If those employees are there for an eight-hour shift, it's less of a risk, in my opinion, more, more acceptable, particularly because it is a one-way entrance only now. If there was an, if there was an exit from that northerly point, I would advise against it. So as long as it's relatively long-term parking for the day for employees only, in the same regard, the employee parking near the propane tanks, that's, that's a spot that does need to have a better, it needs to be managed better. It does, you know, we are trying to maximize use of the site, but there was no outright objection from staff on the, on those parking spaces. Let's see here. Signage, the plan shows the signage, the reduced seating. I did include in this memo for you guys a worksheet, just to walk through the site plan application standards. If we get to the point of discussing, making a motion with conditions, we'd have to revisit the original memo, staff memo, I have a copy here, that we can talk through with conditions. So, that's that. Now, I'm going to grab a copy, no, no, I do have a copy here. Late last week, we received a letter from DOT, and I think I mentioned this, that the DOT was brought into the game. We had spoken with District 2 about a year ago. District 2 said, "It's an urban compact, we don't need to see it." At the applicant's request, we contacted DOT in Concord. DOT in Concord said, "Well, this does involve a segment of roadway that received public funding, so we want to make sure that our investment is protected." So, in fact, in the, excuse me for a second here, DOT Bureau of Planning and Community Assistance conducted a review of the proposal of the new curb cut at the southerly end of the property. You could see in the letter that, that we received, it is a letter of concurrence. It says, "This is okay." You have a copy, I wonder if it's a benefit for the audience if, if I read what's on that letter?
Sure.
Department has reviewed the proposed site plan with a new curb cut onto Route 11 dated July 7, 2016, prepared by Thomas C. Dombrowski, LLS, and a driveway plan dated April 2017 as prepared by the DeFrain Group Consulting Engineers. These plans indicate a new curb cut onto Route 11 from property at 214 Washington Street. The department's review concluded that a new right, that a new right-turn, right-turns-only exit driveway shouldn't cause any issues with traffic on Washington Street. However, the city should consider the issue that it appears public funds was expended to install traffic signals at the driveway to the shopping center to control traffic for these parcels. These signals are within 60 to 80 feet of the proposed new driveway curb cut. With that said, segregating the out parcel, being the Brickers' Lot, from the larger lot, being the Plaza, and providing independent driveways is the exact opposite of what would be preferred from an access management viewpoint. The department concurs with this proposal, provided the city tries to eliminate the proliferation of access points by negotiation with the shopping center owner, since this parcel was the direct beneficiary of public expenditure to mitigate traffic access points and control the cross-traffic with a signal. So, after receiving this letter, we reviewed it with the Traffic Advisory Committee last Friday, and the consensus was to contact Rosen Associates one last time. And that is the email correspondence that I have included for your information. What, what we can say about the DOT review, and what I confirmed with DOT was, if they absolutely objected to the new curb cut, they would have barred it from happening. They would have said, "No, you cannot do this." They apparently have the power to do that, they have, they have had the power to require engineering improvements and changes to new intersections, let's say, when Lowe's was coming in, or Home Depot was coming in. They did extensive review of those, so they do have that capacity. In this case, they concur with the proposal for the new curb cut. The, the interesting language is in the last couple paragraphs saying, "We spent public money on this signalized intersection, you guys should really try to get that done." We've, as you know, we've reached out to the Claremont Plaza owners a number of times, and I think you've heard the attorney testify a number of times, that it's not in the Plaza's interest to do that. The email that I sent this morning was one last attempt, and when I sent this, I'd expected their attorney to be here tonight, but he is not here.
He's not here?
No. Nope. He, he informed me that he wasn't planning on coming, and apparently the owner concurred. So there's no further conversation, apparently. What we can do about this, I'm not quite sure, but I need to provide this information, because it's relevant to this application. I'll leave it there, if you have any questions.
Mr. Stewart?
Can I read that letter from the Rosen Plaza Associates into the record?
We did at the last meeting.
Oh.
Well, the email.
No, not this one, this is the new one.
This is not from them, this is from Mike to them.
This was from me to them.
Okay.
If you like, I can read that as well, I was focusing on the DOT letter.
Me too.
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
But it was one last attempt, we didn't hear any communication back today. I know it's short order, but we worked as quick as we could.
I do have one question in regards to the proposed curb cut. It is deliberately at an angle to encourage a right-hand turn only.
Yes.
But watching how people break the laws on Washington Street, trying to gain access quickly and what they think is more easily to a driveway, I'm concerned that people are going to still want to try to make a left-hand turn out of that driveway. And how can we assure that isn't going to happen? Is the angle of the driveway severe enough so that a person only can make a right-hand turn?
I guess I'll ask you a question. Have you ever seen anybody hop a curb?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
So I would say reasonably, I don't think there is a way to totally prevent it, except for maybe four-foot-high Jersey barriers.
Yep. Because I just see this, because of now you, with the angle of that exit, we are insisting that people make a right-hand turn, and there are going to be those who will try to go against that, and when they do that, it's putting at risk traffic on the highway because of, of the option of turning left when it is supposed to be only right-hand.
It's, it, I think it's showing an intent, reasonable effort to
I understand.
channelize the flow.
I don't like it.
Mr. Green, Rose?
I have a question, so at this point, the properties are only going to be separated by a painted line?
That's the proposal.
No longer fence?
That's the proposal.
Clarification there, only if the Plaza owners wish to leave it like that. If they want to put a fence up, they can.
Right, okay.
But, but right now, because of lowering the capacity of the seat, seating in the restaurant, they're not obligated, if we pass this, to put up a fence, because it's, that was a zoning board, a recommendation.
Okay. I'm just curious, what, is there a consequence to a patron leaving the restaurant to cross the six-inch white line, go around and go to the, go to the light?
It would be, technically, it's a trespass, and it's a question of whether or not there's someone there to enforce trespass on private property.
Because they're using the lot, not for the purposes of shopping in the lot, in the Plaza?
Right, and there's been, you know, and, and past, the Plaza owners have suggested that at BJ Bricker's expense, they put up signage preventing people from parking in the Plaza, parking lot. Yeah, it's not unlike, until a little over a month ago, when the pickups were parked across that northerly access point, it was very, very frequent traffic to and from the Plaza, across Brickers' property, and that was trespass as well. So.
Does the Plaza, with this design, does, does the Plaza gain or lose any parking spaces because the borders are now enforced? Like, do they have a net loss or gain?
No.
Is it neutral? They don't lose anything?
It's neutral. I think, because the striping as shown on the plan is consistent with the striping is today. People choose to park in places other than where it's striped, and so when this sort of gets revised, I would say that people can't park where they want anymore, they have to respect those lines. But officially, they do not.
So, so with this plan, Mike, will it be, will the applicant be responsible for putting the arrows into that parking, for the direction on, on the pavement?
Striping plan would be executed by the applicant.
Okay.
I have a couple, one is, I see you're going to have a "Do Not Enter" sign for people coming out of the Plaza to go left like they have been, and go out, but that's going to be an entrance only supposedly. What's going to happen if people do come out and go, go into the entrance? That's what they do now.
Fair question. I, I don't have an answer for that.
And the other thing I'd like to see, which isn't indicated here, is, I was just talking to the chairman, up in Wells, Maine, there's an intersection that comes onto Route 1, and up to a month ago, it was both ways, and they went right-hand turn only onto Route 1, but what they got in the middle of the road is a big yellow arrow that goes that way only, and I think that makes more sense to me than the signs that are up.
That is.
I think that's what should be done here, big yellow arrow says, "Right turn only" in the road.
Mr. Putnam?
So, there's no question in my mind that there are still going to be use of the entrance for people wishing to access the Plaza. It's, it's, it's been a historical habit that goes back a lot of years, almost longer than I'm old. And, so I'm wondering if the applicant would consider some type of a fence slash barrier that would continue perhaps just as far as where the freezer is, or a little further, to block access and entrance from the Plaza using the proposed driveway entrance?
I'd be happy to step aside if you have questions for the applicant, but just if you had any other technical questions.
Yep. Is there any other questions for Mike?
I have, I don't know if we can stop all these things that we're concerned about. If we're going to grant the access, then we're going to have to deal with the issues, because people just do not pay attention to the signs. You can see it all the time.
Yep.
It happens off the Dunkin' Donuts on Charlestown Road all the time. People drive in, the exit sign, "Go get your coffee," go around, get drive up, and they drive right back out again, instead of going where they belong. It's just the way people think today.
And, and in fairness, I mean, you, this planning board is here for a reason. The planning board doesn't have to say yes. Just, let's, I mean, I know we've, we've got a fairly high success rate in this planning board for approvals, but if something doesn't work, you need to ask the questions till you're satisfied that it does. And if you don't get that satisfaction, you have to make that decision.
Mr. Putnam?
My point about a limited barrier, because the word trespass continuously comes up, and so I'm thinking, if we limit the infractions of trespass from either party accusing the other, that in the long run, there's going to be a better cohabitation of where, where both properties are.
Myself, I'd, I'd rather not see, I think a painted line is about the best.
I would agree.
Well, I don't like it myself.
Yeah. Definitely an obstruction becomes a point of conflict.
I understand.
May I ask one question from, and I don't know if this is something that the board would like to do, but I know you haven't received a response from Rosen, but in reference to our earlier discussion, are they going to see the, the outcome of this and, and the board's decision? Do they understand what's coming down the road if this were to be approved?
Literally, yes. I mean, they do have a copy of the revised plan.
Okay. So do they also understand that in our future planning, that it's a possibility that that traffic site signal could be moved elsewhere?
I don't know. I don't know if they're aware of that.
It might be a good idea to let them be aware of that.
Would it matter to them?
Yeah.
It might. It might.
Yeah, I don't know, it's, it is a public light.
So...
And the reason why I say that, people in the audience who don't know, is we were just reviewing the Washington Street management study, the draft of it, and that was one of the options, is to move that signal down, down the street. And the reason why I bring that up, and that, that I think they, they should be aware of it, there are other possibilities, I mean, separate from this application, that may impact them in the future about how people utilize this parking lot.
There are...
Because ultimately, the best, just like New Hampshire DOT said, you know, ultimately, we're all better served, and you've even said it too, Mr. McCrory, in your letter to them, ultimately, we're all better served by better working relationships with the other businesses in that area.
We've beaten that one up.
Exhausted, yeah.
But this is, I don't know if they had that information, that's all I'm saying.
I think we, I'm not happy about the curb cut at all, but I'm not going to jeopardize a business because we're worried about people trespassing from one parking lot to another. That's not our concern, as a planning board, as far as I'm concerned.
It will become a civil matter in the future.
It will become a civil matter eventually, which is out of our control.
Yep.
Out of control whether we want to allow this variance to take place, or changing to take place. I'm not happy about the curb cut, but if I see the nice bright yellow big arrow in there, turning right, like I said in the meeting before, we cannot sit here and demand 20 signs, because people still aren't going to pay attention to them, because either they can't read or don't care. Pretty simple. We cannot legislate stupidity. It's just not doable.
Any?
Yep. Sorry, sorry, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say again that I don't like this curb cut at all, and I've said that from the beginning. I think it's a safety issue, being so close to the, the traffic lights as it is, and I think what we've added now is even a more danger by just putting that white line. I think what's going to happen, and I'm sure it's going to happen, if nobody's parked in these first three parking spaces closest to the light, I can see people from the Plaza now, shoo, I can get out here quicker, I don't have to sit at the light anymore.
Right.
And scooting right across their property, and I, I think that's even more of a danger. I'd just like to say, I don't like the curb cut for that reason. I think it's too close to the traffic light, and I think it's too much of a safety issue.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else for your turn?
I, I'll ask one more question. Was, was the flow ever considered in the opposite direction?
Yes.
And not as efficient?
This is a proposal.
This, as we understood it, with this proposal, the flow makes more sense for how the parking would be utilized?
Which is solve that issue.
All right, so I will hear, let's hear from the applicant now.
Hi. How are you?
Good. So, as far as addressing those issues that we talked about, are you, you now switching to a...
Did you give an ID?
Was, oh, can you introduce yourself, please?
Sandra Hall, I'm here for the Gertrude Hall Provocable Trust for the benefit of my sister Deborah Hall.
So my, my question is, what are, what are you planning on doing with the freezer? Are you switching that out to a different?
The freezer, I'm not sure on the size of it, and we have to get the roof fixed, which we have a contractor coming in like next week or so, so we're not sure if it even works. I'm in the process of, I have... I'm in the process of, I have court tomorrow morning against my brother, and I do have other things going on in the works. So, as far as the freezer goes, I haven't even been able to turn it on. So, as soon as, I will let Tom Dombrowski answer that question, which, how, what size the freezer is, I'm not sure on that.
Is there any other question from the board?
Just, in theory, we've heard from the plaza owner's lawyer that they will take trespass seriously.
Okay. I have a statement to make on that.
So, let me finish, please.
Okay.
So, how are you going to regard trespass being now that it's just a painted white line on the pavement? And without a question, there'll be people going in and out of your entrance gaining access to the plaza.
I am doing everything in my power as the trustee for the Gertrude Hall Trust. I called the DOT, New Hampshire DOT, a couple of days ago. And Mrs. Maynard is in retirement, and I have touched base with them. He says it's gonna take a while because I am gonna get, go for that right away or whatever I have to do to fix the situation eventually. But that's gonna take a lot of time, and I need to get the restaurant open. I was in court the other day for some, some kind of a ticket that wasn't even a ticket. And I, the judge was making a statement that it's like the Indy 500 around there. So, like 93 South and 495, 95, it's like anywhere from Concord over that way, they call it the Indy 500. And it's just racing, racing, racing. I've been over here, and I've gotten two speeding tickets. So, I just wanna let you know, and I've lived here for, in New Hampshire for seven or eight years, and it is kinda funny. But you, I mean, you have the capacity. You are fortunate enough, your law enforcement has the capacity to control it. They can sit right there, and they can watch people. And, you know, they, hopefully, they will work with the community to make sure that people follow the rules. So, that was, that was from the judge in the court in Brentwood County or something like that. So, he, you know, he made that statement. So, my other thing was, if they choose to put up, they can put up any kind of fence that they want. It's very expensive, and we need to get that restaurant open. It would be nice. But if they put a fence up, there's nothing stopping us putting up a higher fence behind them. And I'm trying to work with them. And like I said, I am trying to work with the New Hampshire DOT. I'm in the process of, the restaurant shouldn't have been ever closed this, this, this long. And I'm trying to get it restored through, you know, courts and things to be reopened. So, I just, you know, I'll go with something higher. I have my parking. And if that's, if that's the way they need to play, then that's the way they need to play. But that letter that I heard from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, that was, that was awesome. They're trying. They, I think they know that there was a mistake there in that response that they did. And I, you know, and I called them, and I'm gonna go forward with that.
That's short.
Are you sure there's enough space for the plaza to go front building for snow removal?
Greg Belile was doing the snow removal until my brother got involved over there with my sister Debbie. And he said he did it before. So, he'll go in, and he'll dump it, and we'll truck it off. So, we're working with him.
Any other questions? All right.
You wanna answer to the freezer, Tom?
Tom's gonna be honest.
Yeah, I got a quick question for you.
Okay.
I wanna point out she's gonna paint that. If you need, I'm gonna say no.
Yeah, Tom Dombrowski's fair. Yeah, I know, the freezer, that's the size of the freezer that's there now. What you saw before, there was a, there was like a piece of roof, and there was a four-by-four post just holding this rain out. That's all it was in. So, that's not really part of the structure of the building. So, the actual dimensions are what you see now of that freezer. I, you know, there's ways of doing this, but everybody has to agree on it. You know, somebody wants to fence, somebody doesn't wanna fence, you know, you know. If it was my suggestion, what I would do is put some kind of curbing in between signs D and E just to keep people from flying through there, curbing or maybe railing. And then maybe, again, over on the corner, on the south property line, maybe some sections or something just to keep people from flying through there. You can put sections of railing, guide railing in, so it's not wide enough for a car to get through. Just something kind of a, or curbing, not totally block it off. You gotta leave it open for drainage. You can't just have a solid wall, you know. But, you know, that's, to me, would take care of some of the issues that the planning board has a problem with. I don't think anybody would. I can see people coming flying out. When I was working on that site, you wouldn't believe the traffic going in and out of that north entrance. And mostly the pizza place. Of course, it wasn't Brickers, 'cause nobody was there. I don't know what else the, I still think something could work without a stripe. I mean, just some sections of, you know, behind the building, you wouldn't need anything because it's natural barrier. But this, as far as the left-hand turn coming out of there, I think it'd be pretty tough going across that. I don't think I'd wanna drive over a curbing. But any other questions?
Yep.
Are you agreeing to put that big yellow arrow?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. That makes a lot of sense. We have a sign pointing, and that's what the arrow you see on the plan. There's already an arrow on there, I believe. Curve arrow. I guess it could be spelled out, too.
Okay. To me, that makes more sense than the signs. People see that.
Well, it's good till it snows.
Yeah. Oh, it's snow, you're gonna plow, remember, you're gonna plow all the time.
Well, we have signs up, we have signs up in front of that anyway.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, that just because there's a white line here defining the border doesn't mean that you don't, that you can't put up barriers if you find there is trespass that is affecting you.
Oh, yeah. I agree.
So, you know, I'm just saying that so that you can think about that.
Yeah. My questions for the board...
I am concerned about trespass going both ways here. That will just exasperate the problem.
My question for the board was, if they decided to put something up, could it be a fence? Or, I mean, the neighbor said it has to be a split rail fence. Is it, I mean, a guide rail? I mean, is that...
It's a mute point.
It's just a suggestion, right?
It's not required now.
Okay.
It's something for you to think about.
That's what I wanted to hear. Okay.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I have a list of the butters, then?
210 Washington Street LLC, Flaramon Associates, Vertical Capital Partners LP, and Rockingham Electric Supply.
All right. With that, I'll open up to public forum. If anybody'd like to speak to this, well, step right up and introduce yourself.
Nick Kalowski, Ward 3. I'm gonna butter to the plaza. I have a couple of comments, and I wanted to speak to you with two different hats tonight. I'll start off as the taxpayer and citizen neighbor. I think that the white line is absolutely pointless. Where, under the applicant's own admission and her, at her request, the entrance that's currently there was blocked by Arrowhead Motors vehicles to prohibit, and Mr. Dombrowski just repeated it, vehicles flying through the plaza into that entrance. So, currently, there are vehicles blocking that, and I've received multiple complaints as a city councilor on that. So, I turned that over to the city, and that's how I found out that it was her request to do so. So, just by adding this white line, and I agree, the curb cut is really not the ideal situation, but I understand everything's been exhausted. But if you look at this curb cut, the exact same thing that has been happening with, and they say it's Domino's employees, so... But if they're gonna do the same thing, or whoever is going to avoid the traffic signal, and they're gonna go in that exit to cut across, and it happens everywhere. So, the little sign that's facing and says do not enter, at least not gonna stop you. So, without actually putting in that guard rail as requested by the plaza, who is also a taxpayer, that's their request, I agree that it should be there. If you look at the way these parallel parking spaces are, in the event, and Mr. Kalenda's correct, in the event one or two of those spaces is empty, you're actually creating a bigger hazard. Because instead of, if you're dining in Brickers and you wanna leave, and you're gonna exit through that light and trespass, as the plaza says, you could just cut through one of those open spaces and now use the traffic signal. So, by not requiring some sort of fence, we're creating a bigger issue of safety into the plaza now itself, not just Washington Street. So, that was one concern I have. The other one is, and I'm not interested in my tax dollars babysitting these parking lots with police arguing over who's parking where. That's already gonna happen, I can see it. But now, we're talking about, so you're not gonna request a fence, or maybe you will, but we're talking about one-upping them already and adding a larger fence behind their fence. So, instead of playing fence games, put right in the plan now metal guard rail, and that solves the problem. I am concerned about snow removal, and I'm wondering how that is actually enforced. Because all too often, I see things noted in a site plan, and I don't know how, where the teeth come to enforce that. And the reason I'm so concerned about snow removal is the person she referenced that would be removing the snow, there's a citizen's complaint from the neighborhood behind there of snow removal and being pushed out in the street of their current lot. So, I'm curious if they're gonna receive their snow and add that to that heap. The snow was from the other neighboring lot piled up into my backyard, onto my property without my permission. And it came to a point where it was feet from the power line that runs there. And neighborhood kids were on the snow pile, and I could actually hear the humming of the power line. So, that's when that came to an end. So, I'm curious where the snow is really gonna go and how that's enforced. So, wearing my city council hat for a minute, I submitted a request today to the city manager. I wanted to know what the public amount of funds expended to maintaining that traffic signal. Because if we're gonna go back and talk to the plaza about entrance here, kinda on to little backing of how much our tax dollars have gone into maintaining access to this private property. So, I just wanted to make that known, and that request has been submitted this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. With that, I'll close the public forum and bring it back to the board. So, what's the board think? Where are we at? Yep. Mr. Burgeon?
We're in a dilemma here, whether we like it or we don't. We can do it one way, or we can do it another way. What I'm upset about is, people want us to penalize a small business because one large business don't wanna get along with their neighbor. That's the way I look at it. Okay? Well, whatever. There's a problem here. Okay? If they wanna put a fence up, let them put the fence up. Okay? Can we eliminate every kind of a problem we're gonna have with this parking lot? The answer is no. I wish we could. Are we gonna have people breaking the law? I would say we probably are. And we can't control, it's gonna be up to the landowner that controls their tenants, what kind of a driving habit they have. I think that's up to the tenant, the owner of the plaza. I can't see making the restaurant owner put up a fence when it, she's not, she really doesn't want one. It was the plaza agency that wanted the fence, not her.
But we can make it the best that we can make it. And find the best solution. Can't control people. Can't control how they drive, how they think. But we should, well, this is by the mayor of the site plan, not by our feelings. That's where I stand.
Anybody else? Yep.
I agree with Assistant Mayor in that I think the owner of Brickers has done everything that we have asked her to do. She's modified, made one modification after another. Ultimately, the organization that is creating the challenge is the plaza. And if they want to put a fence in there, they can go through the expense of putting the fence in there, as far as I'm concerned. However, I am, Councilor Kalowski does have a point, and it's outside of her control. But if there's been a pattern established, right or wrong, that the Domino drivers are going through that and accessing it, there's gotta be something that the city's gonna do to notify the plaza of what the repercussions are if those drivers keep going through there, utilizing it when they don't have, they don't have permission to do so. And if we need barriers to slow things down, just for everybody's safety, you know, we could recommend something that I would think you'd want it to be removable. You know, like whiskey barrels with flowers or something to stop people from making it a...
Jersey barriers.
Something. But it shouldn't be at her expense. I just don't...
Mr. Greenberg?
I agree. I wouldn't wanna force it on the applicant. I did like the idea of something as simple as the curbs. 'Cause it, try running over one of those, bust a couple of rims. You make that mistake once. But again, it's, I think they're great ideas. I like the pylons, for that matter. I mean, I remember seeing those in front of that old Sunoco building. That was a good idea, too. I don't know if we can do something like that to help address the left turns that you mentioned there. I mean, that could help to turn. I just don't know if there's space there across that yellow line for it. But again, it's an imperfect situation, and if they don't wanna play ball, I wouldn't wanna force it on the applicant to make those changes. If they're smart, then.
Mr. Putnam?
So, something else we didn't talk about tonight was the applicant's follow-up with securing off-site parking for her employees. And I wanna know what the progress is that's been made with that conversation.
But really, I mean, can we ask for that? Because she's meeting the requirements.
I understand that, but...
I'd hate to turn around and put something even more onto this applicant.
I think it's a fair question because it has been in a conversation in the past. And I would think that she's more concerned about making sure her customers have adequate parking, knowing that she only can use her property for parking. And if she has five employees, that could be five cars taking up valuable parking spots for her customers. And if there's only 22 parking spots here, that leaves 17 for clients for an 80-seat restaurant.
But that's her, that's her...
I understand that. And I just...
We're gonna actually overstep what our ordinance is and...
Yep.
Request that.
She's met the requirement.
I understand.
I would agree that if it wasn't for the variance that had come before with that question of a parking shortage in the first place...
Yep.
We probably wouldn't have this conversation now.
It just limits us when we're trying to make sure... It just limits us when we're trying to make sure that there's, everything is safe and secure.
Yep. I'd just like to make one comment, that when talking about this entrance and you're stating Domino's drivers going through there, they're not the only ones that go through there. For years, like Mr. Putnam said, people go in there for any store in this plaza, plus to go to Hannaford's. They go in that, so they don't have to hit the light. So, it's, I just want to state that it's not just Domino's drivers. It's everyone that wants to go into either Hannaford's or any store in that plaza. They're not the only ones that go through there. I just want to make that...
The only reason why I brought it up, if it's, it's, they're a tenant within that plaza.
Correct, and I understand.
And I'm saying that all those tenants should be given notification of the new pat, traffic pattern, and that's it.
That's correct.
That's all we have control over.
Yep. No, I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Mr. Green Nurse?
A question from Mike. Just curious, Mike, so they're dropping the occupancy from 100 to 80, right, to make this requirement? So, is it a certificate of occupancy that a restaurant gets?
Liquor license, CO.
So, so...
Their food service, their fuel.
In the end, is the CO based on the square footage or some other formula for the facility itself, or is it predicated on the parking spaces? Like, could it still be a capacity of the, for the building of 100? Because that's what it could take, but it's...
That's going to need to be a, yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. The, the building, yeah, the building design, the interior design does dictate what the maximum occupancy of the building is. And part of the, as I understand, the liquor licensing is what the allowable occupancy of the building is. And in this particular case, even if the building has a potential occupancy for more, it needs to be limited to 80.
So, that will actually be on their CO?
Well, it's going to be in this approval. It needs to be carried through to the building permits and the liquor license and all that.
I'm wondering if there was going to disconnect that, do all this, and they say it's 80, and then there's a piece of paper on the wall that says 100.
Right, and understood. And that's, that's going to be something we'll have to address with the fire department as they do their assessments.
Okay. Anybody else?
No.
So, with that, do, do I get a motion?
Well, hold, is there any?
Sure. If we make a brief.
Yes. It's Sandra Hall. My sister isn't here tonight, and she did say that she would like to do something, you know, that, when we can get in there, right now, the roof and everything's leaking. But when we can get there and look at it, if you knew Brickers in the past, it was very tasteful done. She thought maybe do some flower pots on the corners or something, you know? But we have to get in there, you know, and we have to, if you put something on there, that we have to do it, but my sister was thinking some nice, like you said, flower pots or something, you know? And when we get in there, we'll design it, you know, to do, to open, to get it open. But like, we didn't really want to have to do something, but she isn't here to answer, but she had suggested that she would like to maybe put some flower pots on the corner. So, I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. So, do we have any, any motions? Where are we?
I'm making a motion.
Okay. So, you want, how we want to do this, Mike?
I'm not sure about the procedure.
So, you said we needed to visit the old conditions or something like that?
Yeah. Do you have a copy of the, what date was that memo? The May 5th memo? Do you want my copy?
Yeah, I'll keep your copy.
Now, I did take a look, while you guys were chatting, I did take a look at the conditions of approval. A lot of the stuff that we've been talking about is on the fan, but if there's any substantial change you want to make to the plan itself, it should be noted for revision. The, the tag right there has a condition.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan. As proposed.
There, there is in the memo on the prior page, an example of what the motion could be.
Some, one of us has to read that.
I'll let you read that. I'll verbiage on that.
All right. So, so we're going to go through the, we're going to recommend conditions of approval. Is that what we're looking at? There is some...
On the prior page, there's a recommended motion.
Okay. Okay. So, this is what I was, this is what I said. Okay. So, the proposed site plan shall be completed substantially in accordance with the information provided by the applicant in the site plan application, PB case number PB 2017-00006, and testimony during the public hearing for said case. The site shall be constructed and maintained in accordance with the plan titled, Site Plan for Gertrude Hall Revocable Trust, 214 Washington Street, Claremont, New Hampshire, dated July 7th, or July 7, 2016, and revised June 2, 2017, and as amended pursuant to testimony for this case. Three, the applicant shall obtain all necessary permits as determined by the local, state, and federal government, governments, including a driveway permit for the Claremont DPW. Four, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the owner slash applicant shall notify the zoning administrator and building inspector that the project is ready for final inspection. Completion of the project shall be substantially compliant with the plans submitted for review and the conditions of approval and the Planning and Development Department staff determine the changes are substantial and warrant planning board review, then the applicant shall submit for a site plan amendment. This... Five, the site plan is valid for two years for the date of approve, from the date of approval. If a certificate of occupancy has not been issued before the two-year deadline, the site plan is no longer valid and must be recertified through the planning board. Six, two, two copies of the final approved overall site plan printed on my wires and in the form of suitable for recording at the Sullivan County Registry of Deeds shall the, shall be provided to the Clare, Claremont Planning and Development Department. Is there a second on this?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any ayes? One aye. All right. Congratulations. Let's throw. All right. So, we're on to new business.